I'd like to call the Wednesday, April 2nd meeting of the Hamilton County Council to order. Mr. Auditor, may I have a roll call, please?
Ken Alexander.
President.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Tim Griffin.
Here.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mark Hall.
Here.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
May I present the other caller?
Thank you. Next, we will have an indication and pledge of allegiance by Counselor Mark Hall.
Could you please stand and bow with me? By the God, we thank you for this day of life. We thank you for the opportunity to serve your people for your purpose. Tonight, Lord, we want to pray specifically for our public safety officials, all the folks that are working tonight in service and protecting each and every one of us in the county. Thank you for the opportunity. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I think it takes longer to...
Next, I'll have the approval of the minutes from the Hamilton County Council, executive session and minutes of the joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners on March 5th. May Mr. Auditor may have a roll call, please?
Ken Alexander.
Yes.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Yes.
Steve Nation.
Yes.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Next is approval of the minutes of the March 5th County Council meeting.
So move.
Second.
May Mr. Auditor may have a roll call.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. Next, we have public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on any matters? I was given two names. If you could approach the podium, if you could give your name and read into the record your address, and you have three minutes to state whatever you'd like to talk about today.
Thank you. My name's Betty Jo Wills. I live at 24011 Twilight Hills Drive in Cicero. I am here to talk about...I sent all of the council members email last...after the last meeting because there was discussion about the $10 million for the utility district. And I don't know a lot about how you guys work, but as a person who lives on Twilight Hills Drive, I've talked to a lot of my neighbors. I know there's people saying that a lot of people are clamoring for the sewer to be put in there. I have talked to all the neighbors on all sides of me. Nobody wants the sewer. Nobody wants to hook up to the sewer. I've tried to get three different companies to come out and give me an estimate, and because they don't know where the meter hookup or the hole's going to be, they won't do that. I had one guy give me a company give me a rough estimate of between $15,000 and $20,000. I don't know about you guys, but I don't have the funds for $15,000 or $20,000 for a sewer that I do not want. When we were polled, when it was first being asked if we wanted it, I would say 90% or better, that's my estimate, said, "No, we don't want this up here." But now we have it. We're stuck with the utility district. Couple of things, you guys have my letter, you can reread it now that you can put a face with the letter, but I want to point out a couple of things. Not every one of those 15 people on Twilight Hills Drive wants a sewer connection. I am here to tell you that. I would stand before God and say the same thing, and I'm very religious, and I wouldn't do that just flippantly. A large portion of Jackson Township does not want to be hooked up to the sewer. They don't. Why we moved out into the country was because we wanted to have, say, in what we do. It's funny, it says government is best, is the governs least. I'm now being told that it's probably going to be inevitable, that somebody's going to come out and condemn my sewer and that type of stuff, because it's an older home. I live on a 1970's property. There's a lot of things that are not true that are being said, and we just feel like we want you guys to hear from an actual homeowner that lives out there. Not everybody wants it. Not everybody's clamoring for it. As I drove down 241st tonight, I stopped and talked to neighbors, said, "You guys want to hook up the sewer?" Oh, gosh, no, we don't want that. There are signs in people's yards on 241st. They don't want the sewer. I want you guys to hear it from an actual homeowner, because I've not met any of you guys. Nobody's came and asked me what I want, and I'm the one who's going to have to foot the bill for it. And that really bothers me that I'm close to retirement, but I might not be able to retire because I got to pay to hook up to a sewer. There's a lot of constituents in the county, in Jackson Township, that are going to be harmed financially and emotionally with trying to come up with the money. I have a good job, my husband has a good job. That doesn't mean we want to spend $15,000, $20,000 on a sewer hookup. I have a kid getting married next year. I'd much rather spend it on his wedding. And finally, I don't know that 15 homes on Twilight Hills Drive is going to make or break the utility district. I heard someone say last year it's 15, or last month, it's 15 flushes. Is that really going to make or break that utility district? I'm asking you to reconsider and then think harder about this $10 million and coming down just to capture Twilight Hills Drive. Two people, one who put a swimming pool in his yard and one who doesn't have a sewer, they want it. Two out of 15, two out of 20? Is that fair to the people who don't want it? I'm just, that's just, I don't get it. I, that's all I got to say.
I'm not mad at anybody, but you guys need to think about the homeowners. Thank you.
Not the utility district.
Next, is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? Okay, moving on. State your name and your address in three minutes.
Shelby Wills, Twilight, 24011 Twilight Hills Drive. I'll be quick. I, I work in numbers. I'm the county bookkeeper. I'm here as a resident, but I have a finance background, and I'm here to talk about the $10 million as well. And truthfully, I think there are much better uses for that money than continuing the, or starting the utility district. The roads around Hamilton County that are county roads truly need work right now. And starting something that's not going to help break even on the utility district, I don't think is the, is a great way to spend $10 million. And I hope you guys consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to committee and officer reports. President, we have a, like to introduce our new Director of Council Operations, Kelly Morehouse. Kelly's going to be sitting up here at the front, so you will see her in future meetings. And she has been meeting with all the different departments, getting to know the county. She comes to us from Tippecanoe County, but soon to be a Hamilton County resident, and she has quite a bit of variety of experience in government and county level. So, welcome, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next, we have Vice President report.
I have none.
I got nothing.
Highway.
We did not meet.
Funds.
We did not meet, but we'll meet the day before next month's meeting.
Thank you. Personnel.
We did meet, right? That was this one. Geez. We met, had discussions. I don't think there's much to be said.
Major projects?
We met. The focus of the meeting was really a process for projects, and I think that information's been shared.
Okay, thank you.
Continue to be highly involved.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Solano, is anything good for the order? All right, moving on. There's no unfinished business or table business, new business, approval of vendor claims, drive a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a roll call?
Well, thank you. May I have a roll call, Mr. Auditor, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have a presentation of the annual report from the Hamilton East Public Library.
Good evening. I want to say thank you, first of all, for allowing me to come present to the Hamilton County Council and for the opportunity to share some data with you that we gather every year for the annual report for the Indiana State Library. My name is Melissa Loycel, and I'm the Director at the Hamilton East Public Library. When I was here last year, I was with my co-interim director, Molly Mrazowski, but I am happy to report that I was appointed the Director last spring, so I'm the Director, the new Director now. And then we do have Beth Tyler as one of our appointed, the appointees that the council makes to the Hamilton East Public Library Board, and our other appointment from you is Kim Logan. She's not able to be with us this evening. So, our library is comprised of four townships that make up Noblesville and Fishers, including Noblesville, Wayne, Delaware, and Fall Creek. The most recent census for our library service territory was 180,617 people, and we currently have 87,410 registered resident cardholders. As a measure of total population served, we're the largest library in Hamilton County and the fourth-largest library system in the state of Indiana. We did report a slight dip in our library traffic, but when we were pulling the numbers for the state, we became aware of one of our sensors at our, one of the entrances is, was not pulling data or was not counting people. So, we'll know that next year the numbers will be up because we have, we had the vendor come out and fix that. So, we had to do an estimate this year, and so we wanted to be conservative in our estimate. So, next year, we should, that number should be back up. Here's a breakdown of expenditures for the library operating budget. You'll see that, like most organizations, our largest expenditure is on salaries and benefits. This category includes our salaries, health insurance, payment, pension payments, and we spent 21% of budget, the budget on services and charges. That includes a variety of things like cleaning, utilities, repairs and maintenance, but it also includes, where, that's where we spend our purchases for e-book, where we purchase our ebooks from, downloadable audio, and then also the databases that we provide. The majority of the capital outlays category is also spent on library materials, including books, DVDs and audiobooks. We increased our expenditures in the capital outlays in 2024. A large portion of that was spent on increasing our budget on library materials. We also upgraded computers, replaced some 20-year-old furniture, and we also did a large security overhaul for the library, adding security cameras and new access control to all of our doors. Mike Royder is the library's financial consultant, and we have a wonderful CFO, Kim Lefler, and if we have, if you have any more detailed questions about our library budget, we would be happy to meet with you. We circulated 2,294,067 items in 24, 2024. Roughly a third of that circulation was from electronic materials, although the vast majority of our circulation is still from our books, CDs and movies. We will continue to evaluate the best way to allocate the funds in these, in this category, so if we see more people switching over to digital materials, we'll, we'll have to adjust. A digital book costs about three or four times more than a physical book. And then I do have the top five most popular items on this slide, three of which are the, are children's materials. Children and families continue to prioritize books in print over digital, and they're some of our most dedicated users, so you can't beat Mo Willems. We're pleased to share that our program numbers are up in 2023 in every age category. We offered more programs and that had better attendance at those programs. When we looked at the data very granularly, we found that the average attendance per program had increased. We eliminated some programs in 2024 that had just regularly low attendance and asked our staff to, to identify things that would maybe be, draw more people in. So, that paid off, and we'll continue to make certain that we're offering programs that the public votes for with their feet. We're not totally satisfied with these numbers, so we're hoping to see more growth in those next year. Our outreach team continues to do a great job representing the library at a variety events. They now have a custom van with a, that's custom designed for our outreach team, and a new wrap that was designed for us by the Wilkinson Brothers and their, they, their local group that they've done a lot of murals around in the area. So, we just, we really love what they came up with for the van. Our outreach team reached over 25,000 people last year and were at over 100 events. And I remember seeing the data for 2023, and I was shocked at how, how many things they went to. And so I was amazed that they had increased it by over 20% in 2024. So, I really don't know how. I think that they maybe are just like cloning themselves to get to these things. They're at a lot of events, like Peony Festival, Spark Fishers and Boobash, but they also go to things like soup kitchens, literacy nights at local elementary schools, farmers markets, senior citizen centers, and too many things to, to list off here. We do offer a patron survey, experience survey every year. This is our sixth year offering this survey. Most of our ratings remain steady with slight drops in library materials and technology. We can attribute this change we made to our Hoopla Digital Collection. Hoopla is one of the platforms that you can use to download materials, and, but in that model, you pay per item that is downloaded. And in January of last year, we started noticing a, an increase in the number of people who were using it, which is great, except for that, it, that number was going up and up and up. And so we had to put a cap on that because we were going to run out, we didn't want to run out of money for materials in July when we still had the rest of the year to buy things for. So, that did upset people, but we have reached a good point for where we are able to meet the needs of people and also making sure that we're being fiscally responsible. Most of the negative feedback we had for technology were some printing issues that we had. We, we are working with a new vendor, and they've been able to alleviate a lot of those issues. As we reflect back on 2024 and move into 2025, we're committed to being community-focused in our planning and operations. We want to be sure that we offer programs that appeal to our community members of all ages and that the materials we purchase meet the demand, demands of our community. We're almost finished with overhauling our security system that our, so that our space is the safest it possibly can be for our community, and we're completing a feasibility study for a potential third branch that would serve the rapidly growing portions of Wayne and Fall Creek Township. We launched a new website and app to help improve our users' experience, and we started a new library foundation so that we can continue to provide amazing experiences that enhance the quality of life in Hamilton County. And it is an honor to lead this library system, which happens to be my local library. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Not a question as much as a comment. I just want, want you to know for the record how much I appreciate you inviting me out, hosting me, spending time, talking through, and you give me the grand tour. I really appreciate what you've done and your heart and, and the leadership that you've exuded in the time that you've been in charge.
Thank you, and I would welcome any of you to come out, and we would be happy to show you around either library, both libraries. You can do the whole grand tour, so anytime. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance CC 0402-2025.a, Hamilton County Council ordinance establishing an enhanced access fund. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Auditor, may I have a roll call?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, discussions.
Can somebody tell me for the record what an enhanced access fund is?
Here, here's the county recorder.
Good evening. The Enhanced Access Fund is a fund created, my images are available online. I'm switching to a new system effective May 1st. My prior company did not charge, well, they charged an access fee, but they didn't share it with the recorder. The new company that I'm going to shares that fee with the recorder now, so I would get a portion of that, and I have to create a fund to allocate that money to it.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye, I'm staying.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution CC 0402-2025.1, Resolution approving interlocal agreement for funding of the Hamilton County Regional Utility District 2025 operational budget. Do I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
That, Mr. Auditor, may I have a roll call?
I...
Oh, discussions.
Yeah, we need to discuss.
And we have Mr., Mr. Sullivan coming to explain and answer questions.
We have some correct answers for everyone. Good evening.
I see in our, I see in our, what was it? Oh, vendor claims, it's two mi, $2,000, $2,78,000. We expect that every year going forward.
I, the dollar amount, I am not sure, but there will likely be a request going forward. It would be treated similar to how you guys go through budgets with other departments. As you know, the utility district got up and running after your budget session for the 2025 year. So, going forward, I would assume CJ, myself and whoever else will be assisting with that would submit it to you guys through your normal budget process. But every agreement that we have in place has the language, actually, that Councilman Hall, I think it was one of your first council meetings, that has language in there that the utility district will refund the county at the soonest available time. So, that's been in every single one so far, and is in this one too, sir.
And that, that would include the operating expenses?
Yes, sir. It's in, it's in the actual interlocal, which is an attachment to this resolution.
But as, as we get users coming on the line, that number should go down.
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I had.
So, let's talk about the, the risk, the updated language. You want to, you want to talk about?
No, that's a, that's a different item.
That's a different item.
That's the next item.
Ah, I'm one ahead. I'm sorry, I'm one ahead. I'm skipping you, Connor.
That's okay.
He'll be back.
Yeah, stay close.
Yes, stay close.
Stay right here, man.
Any other with regards to the operating expenses? Okay, Mr. Auditor may have a roll call.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution CC 0402-2025.2, a resolution concerning the funding of Hamilton County US 31 Infrastru, Infrastructure Project Phase 2.
Three.
Three, thank you.
I'm sorry, I almost said Phase 2. We're already, sorry, paying those bills.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, this resolution before you is to, for the county council to provide up to $10 million for Phase 3. The language is rather flexible. It's similar to, I think, the 116 Pedestrian Bridge. I think there's another capital project that we've done before where the council is, has exactly the legal authority that you all know you have, that you can determine what revenue source, whatever is legally available to pay this. It is not required right now. It will be sometime near future. The language stipulates that the commissioners will work with the council to make sure the scope is correct and appropriate, and everyone's comfortable with it. And further, it has language in there, thanks to Council Attorney Chris Cheater, that if extraordinary circumstances were to occur through the General Assembly, the council can then, at that point, reserves the right to reconsider this $10 million contribution. So, it, it leaves the, it's up to the county's, council's prerogative, whether it's cash, bond, or whatever financing mechanism you determine necessary. Any questions, comments or concerns?
Is that the only out? What's, what's extraordinary circumstances defined as?
Well, so, I think the nice part is it's up to your interpretation, yours and your attorney's interpretation, and another thing about resolutions, and they are, one resolution today, you can always appeal it at the subsequent meeting, too. So, that's if something happens outside of the General Assembly, something happens and the scope is something where you don't agree to or something like that, the council entirely has the legal authority to rescind this resolution at a future date, which is why we put the language in there, that the commissioners and council will work hand in hand to make sure the scope is appropriate.
When do you think we'll get design documents that'll show how the money's going to be spent?
I, I believe this, some of the design, since, I think I mentioned last time, some of it does have land acquisition concerns. I believe it's been shared and Councilman Griffin, Alexander and Councilman Masalomani, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's been shared at one point in time with the major projects committee. Does that sound right?
It was some time ago. I'm not, but I know that that's...
It'll be at the next, that, I believe at the next major projects committee, this will be more thoroughly discussed with what the actual scope is, what anticipated it would be. And once we, I believe we have a council-commissioner joint meeting in the very near future, I think at that point in time it would be appropriate to fully lay it out due to those land acquisition concerns in a joint executive session. So, you would know, have a rough idea, Councilman Hall, in the very near future, I would, I would believe.
As you can imagine, I get, representing that district, I get a lot of, a lot of email, a lot of calls. With the two young ladies tonight, it's, it's now about 65, 35 still in favor of it. But one of the questions I want to make sure and get on the record, there's no, there's no actual design. We haven't figured out where the fire hydrants are going to go. We haven't acquired ground.
That's correct.
None of that has happened because there's not been any funding to go and do it. Am I saying this correctly?
That is 100% correct.
So, there's still an infinite number of ways that this could go. It could go 20 different directions.
That is, I, it may not be 20 exactly, but there's several, I don't want to speak for the engineers, but there's several ones. And I would assume, too, if there's a more advantageous route that would do it, so that brings the cost under $10 million, I assure you, people will make sure we explore that option.
And you mentioned it a minute ago, it also requires the acquisition of some ground or right away at some point as well.
Yes, it's, yeah, no matter which way it go, I can't imagine, unless there's something I am not aware of, the county doesn't own ground in this area, so we would acquire land from someone at some point in time.
Okay, and no disrespect to our state legislatures. And no disrespect to our state legislatures, if, if the rug gets pulled out from underneath us, we have an out.
Correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor, number one, am I correct that, that if I lived in the area that this potentially would serve in the future, I'm under no obligation to hook up to the sewer?
So, you have no legal obligation to ever hook up to water. Sewer, there are, it depends. If you are within 300 feet of the water or the sewer line, then you would. And it's not your property line either, it's your actual house. So I know a lot of people, not, not all of them, but there are a decent amount of people that live in the area that may have a long driveway or something like that. If you are over, if your house is over 300 feet away, you would not have to hook up at that point. If you were to hook, or if you were to have a working septic system, you can get a, you would have to apply for an exemption with the health department and hire a, an inspector that's on an approved list from the health department to say that your septic is in good working condition. You get it first time for up to 10 years and then you have two more five-year exemptions afterwards. The commissioners and had several questions about what happens in 20 years. Counselors, if I can tell you what's happening in 20 years, you should pay me a heck of a lot more money. I don't know. And that's something that we can make a legislative priority going forward. But as it stands right now, the, and the county's website too, on the utility district page, it has a flow chart to explain to everyone what the actual process is for that. I know a lot of people have a lot of concerns about numbers and everything too, but the county, utility district has the rates, the PTOs rates, everything like that on the county website. We want to make it easy and accessible for everyone. I think there's a lot of people that are probably on social media that don't either know the, the county's website is available or just disregard facts and information, but...
But if you live in a one-acre lot and the sewer goes down the road, you have to spend your money not to connect to it?
If you have a working septic, you would have to spend some money to get that inspection to be eligible for that exemption, yes, sir.
Okay. Here's my second question. Has the zoning in the area that this impact been taken into consideration? If, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, we're gonna spend $10 million to expand our sewer and water system beyond what we've already got. And, but have you taken into consideration the zoning in the area we're gonna expand into? Because if you pick up 10, 10-acre lots, that's not enough to pay for this expansion. Does the zoning reflect the kind of density that we would need to make this a, a profitable venture?
So I, I'll try to answer it as best I can. So right now, Cicero Jackson Township Plan Commission is going through their comprehensive plan analysis, just like the county did several years ago. I, I know they're coming to, I think actually the final plan might be being presented, I think maybe this month or maybe next month or something like that. Right now, I think that this general area is still gonna be zoned for agricultural use. But I do believe in CJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but they are having, adopting similar language that the county did for our agricultural zoning. When we did our comp plan, that if there's a development that comes by that meets certain standards, then it would just be as a simple rezone, is that correct? I don't say simple, I don't think it's actually that simple, but. A rezone and a PUD. A PUD. And so it's not, maybe as an onerous process, as saying something's prohibitive, whatnot, but I think the idea is they're trying to protect agricultural heritage and culture, but have the idea of sustainable, reasonable growth. And when that would to happen, occur, then at that point, there'd be water and sewer at that point in time available.
I'm, I'm in favor of our sewer system getting customers and becoming a asset to the community. I am concerned that we're moving into areas that are now zoned agricultural, because when you need to go for a rezone, that opens you up to the process of getting a rezone. And then you get, and rightly so, you get a lot of public input. So we're gonna spend the $10 million upfront to put sewer lines into an area that doesn't have the density that we would need to make this thing viable, hoping that the zoning will come around once the sewer's already there. And I would just say, that's what we hope for in Adams Township, and it hasn't worked that way. That's all I got.
Yes, sir.
The inspection cost? How much is this inspection gonna cost people to not have to connect?
CJ, Jason, do you guys? I, I don't know if they'll give you a hard, definite answer just because it is through a private company, that the county has no control over what that inspection cost is, but you guys have a rough idea of what it is?
I don't have an idea what that cost is.
I'd say estimated cost of inspections that we've heard is around $800. Part of that is that, part of the inspection process that is also required is that the septic tank be pumped. And part of that cost is around $300 to have a septic tank pumped so it can be inspected.
Okay, so it's gonna cost them $800 to not connect? And then they'll have to be, they, if the way the law reads today, they'll have to connect in 20 years?
Correct. Possibly. Correct, though.
They'll have 10 years on the first exemption, and then after that, they can do it in five-year phases.
For up to two, five years?
Yeah, for up to two, five-year phases to get 20 years.
Any exceptions for age, fixed income, AV of the house?
No, because the state code doesn't allow that. But we are going to sit down after the next utility board meeting with Jason, the health department, Mark Harebrant, Commissioner Harebrant has some people that he's tapping at Okra, and we're looking at different ways to help offset those costs for those who may be in need of that. We don't have anything in, we don't have anything in stone yet, but we are exploring that and trying to find ways to help make that happen.
Would be, it would be good to advocate then for some sort of exception down at the state, based on, like we do with, with property taxes, based on AV and disability and, and income. The same thing applies here. If we're gonna force a taxpayer to have to pay money to not connect to a utility, that would make sense.
Right. And if, if the need is there, the environmental need is there, then they need to connect. But I agree wholeheartedly with you, we need to find creative ways to help offset those costs for people to be able to connect if the environmental need is actually there. When that exemption runs out, or if there's a failing septic system and they need to connect, it would be great if we had some funding sources in place to help some of those people.
Sure.
And that's what we're working on.
And then the cost of connection if their sewer fails is what?
I don't think the lady was very far off. I bet it's $20,000.
It depends on if they have to have a grinder pump, then yes, they're gonna be pushing $20,000. Probably a little bit less, but yes, it could be pushing $20,000 if they need a grinder pump. If they don't, it could be considerably less.
I certainly understand their apprehension.
Absolutely. And the, the utility district is going to waive the connection fees and the impact fees for anybody who does involuntarily hook up within six months of being notified that it's available to them.
Okay.
So they'll waive those costs. And like I said, we're diligently looking for ways to help people offset those other costs. Because it, it is an impact. There's no question about that.
Yeah, whether it's immediate or down the road?
Correct. Absolutely.
One of the things too, Councilman Hall, is when the commissioners announced that their utility district meeting, one thing to point out is a private utility company would not waive those system developer charges or tap-on fees for that, for those people that do say they want to tap on within that six-month period. So it's one of the things, it's a nice part of having the government do it, you have that flexibility discretion to try to provide that assistance to, but that's just more of a note, I guess.
Yeah, our friends to the west would agree with you.
Yes, sir.
Wholeheartedly with what they've experienced. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Auditor, may we have a call for the vote?
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, I'm opening the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. The first item is General 1,000, the first item actually is of the Assessors Office 144 Amendment for Certification Pay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Auditor.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have the Auditor's Office, a 144 Amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Auditor.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a transfer of $64,505.28 for, from a PAT B to an exec A position.
So moved.
The Auditor's Office.
Second.
Mr. Auditor.
Wait a minute, we've, we've taken two votes, and there's only two items. Now, this is the third one. Really? I got A and B. What do you got?
Assessor's office.
Then you have two A.
The assess.
Oh, that's right. Assessor, not, and this is the order, but I, my mistake. Go ahead.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have in the Commissioners, additional appropriation of $25,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Auditor.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Next, we have a 144 Amendment for the Commissioners. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Auditor.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Next, we have a Community Corrections 144 Amendment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Auditor.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Next, we have a Coroner's Office 144 Amendment. Do I have a?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Auditor.
Ken Alexander.
Aye.
Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Tim Griffin.
Aye.
Sue Mackey.
Aye.
Steve Nation.
Aye.
Mark Hall.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Next, we have an ISSD reduction of $12,120. Do I have a motion?